Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, November 4th, 2015. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. And we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a public comment is where we always begin, and we don't have anyone signed up for public comment, going once, going twice. So, we'll move right into our presentations. We have two presentations this morning, both on the topic of economic development. So, the first one is the Grow EDC First Quarter Report, and Allison McKenzie is here, and she'll be followed by SEDCor's First Quarter Report, and we have Chad Freeman and Nick Harville here for that. Unless you have a PowerPoint over there. Yes, thank you.
Good morning, it's great to be here with you. Do you have a copy of the report that we sent in? So, you've got a copy of that in front of you.
I believe so, and if you would introduce yourself for the record to Allison.
Sure, Allison McKenzie, Allison Ford McKenzie, Executive Director and Entrepreneurial Coach for Grow EDC. And we work in the string of small towns east of Salem along Highway 22. What I thought we'd do this morning, I'll talk about some of the statistics and some of the projects we've been working on, and then if you've got some questions about some of those things, we can talk about that as well. The summer is usually on the quiet side for us, and that was pretty typical for this summer. So, this is talking about the period from the 1st of July through the end of September. We work with 77 different individual clients during that time. You'll notice that a lot of these are folks who already have a business of some sort. That's pretty typical with a program about our age, we're seven years into our Grow North Saniam program, which offers the free confidential one-on-one consulting. What that means is that we've built up enough trusting relationships that people who have had businesses are coming to us to talk to us and get some help on those things. Our Small Steps Big Results class is on hiatus over the summer months. Our Young Professionals group does continue to meet, so we've had, we had 58 people participate, 58 total attendance at the workshops that we held over the summer months, 31 different individuals taking that. And there is some crossover between individual clients and people who are taking classes, which we highly encourage. That's really strong support for them to do that. We had, of the 77 people we spoke with, about 10 have new ideas for a different business. And they range from pretty solid ideas to some that are fairly wild, and that's, that's what we expect, we want to do that. You know that we look first for how passionate somebody is for what they want to be doing, and then we help them put strong feet with a particular methodology so, under their business, so that they have a stronger likelihood of success. So, some of the major things that we're working on this year are following up on the Economic Vitality Summit that we had in the spring. And there are four projects that are underway at this point, all in different phases right now. One of the first is an objective to launch a tourism initiative in our region that was stretched from Almsville, Saio, up to Marion Forks. This obviously is done in concert with Travel Salem and Travel Oregon, we can't do it without them. The big thing right now is that we're applying for a rural tourism studio to be the guinea pigs for the first version, the new sleeker version, Rural Tourism Studio Lite with Travel Oregon. We're first in the queue, we're turning in our application on Friday, and if everything goes according to plan, and it's still up to them, if everything goes according to plan, we'll be able to start that program after the 1st of the year. And this is a, a pretty in-depth training program that helps communities work together, collaborate with each other to build a tourism product, brand a region, and collaborate with each other across county and community lines, so that it's a seamless, unique, exciting experience for visitors. And we're looking at things that we already have to work with, assets that we already have that we can build on, and we have lots of beautiful outdoor recreation opportunities, and that's what the focus of this rural tourism studio will be. The second one has to do with youth engagement and workforce development. And we were behind the scenes on this, but it's this important thing that happened in State and Sublimity that I wanted you to know about. The North Saniam School District and the State and Sublimity Chamber of Commerce partnered to create the first ever Trades Day, and I know that SEDCor was also involved in this as well. And there were five or 600 kids that came from six different high schools and three middle schools to see what it would be like to work in the trades. Some got to climb on heavy equipment, look at simulators. We were, we helped this chamber behind the scenes on that, but it was an important project, and I wanted to make sure you knew about that, that the chamber and the school district spearheaded. The other piece that we're working on is talking with our Young Professionals Group about how they would like to engage with youth in the community, particularly mentoring high school students. And they're very interested in doing something, especially doing some kind of small group meetings with students. And the next step is to talk with Todd Miller at the school district in Mill City, because they feel that would be a good one. This is driven by the young professionals, so we're following their lead on this and encouraging them and catalyzing that process. Our community-based lending program won't be occurring till later in the spring. And the last major objective that we're looking at is learning a value chain methodology, and we just started the training, we had a training in September just for us, and we started another official training yesterday, Grady McMahon and I, who's the US District Ranger, Ranger in the Forest Service District in Detroit, are taking that. And the purpose that we're doing this for is to see how we can apply that to the natural resources industry, whether it's specialty wood products, value-added wood products, something along that line. Before we pursue anything there, though, we need to test first how passionate people are in the wood products industry to go down that road to find other ways to leverage the trees that we have there. And we don't know the answer to that question, in fact, SEDCor and I were just talking about that a minute ago. But that methodology is very useful in other industries, and we think we can apply it to businesses. It's instead of starting with, we've got a lot of trees, you start with demand for the thing that you want to make. And there were a few other things that I wanted to mention too. We had 150 counseling sessions, by the way, over the summer months. We have met with a fundraising coach, and three of us are taking a grant writing workshop series right now. I helped a little bit with Almsville Training for the Business Retention and Expansion Program, they could not come to the one that Nick did. Our 20-year anniversary is next year, so we've begun our discussions about our 20-year anniversary for Grow, for the North Saniam Canyon Economic Development Corporation, and our seven-year anniversary for Grow. We've talked a little bit with DLCD about potential projects that we might be able to do after the rural tourism studio, that would be really helpful for us. There's also, the final Ford Family Leadership Program is going to be held in our area, starting after the 1st of the year, they're recruiting right now. And these things we put in there, just so you knew about this, this is the first time they've done one that's region-wide, usually they focus on just a couple of communities. So, that will also be helpful, because we've seen that collaborative spirit growing, it should be a really good group. There's also a CTE application that went in from the school district in Mill City for manufacturing and construction applications. They just turned that grant in, we wrote a letter of support for them, that's not a big deal. The big deal is that they're making this application. And Yvonne Hannah, who used to be on the school district and is now working for the, school board for the district, is now working for the district, and Debbie Fawcett, who is their business educator, were the ones working on that grant, and we're hopeful that they'll get that. That would be a campus, that would be, there's quite a bit of ground there, if you're thinking about the Mill City area, there's quite a bit of ground there for them to put this campus. And we're hoping at some point, if this gets built, we'll also be able to access that for adult training. And then, we're also a fiscal sponsor for Almsville's Summer Literacy Program, and that program has been very successful. They had 489 children participating this summer, they averaged 187 kids per session. The vast majority of children came from Almsville and Staton, there were a few from up the canyon, some from Saio, Turner, a couple with Salem addresses. And all of these kids get a free book each week, there are some structured activities that they do, and total, they read 211,000 hours. And that kind of literacy connection is so important for kids as they move from school year to school year. And part of economic development where we are is making sure that, is helping kids and families be healthy and educated as well. Education is a real stumbling block in our area, and we want to support those kids and families to get the best education they can. That's a quick summary.
Questions?
Allison, so, can you go into more detail a little bit about what your, your participation is in the Almsville Summer Program? I know that Commissioners have all been involved in that over the years.
Yeah, this is, this summer program is, is, is really incredible. It started six years ago with eight kids, and now you can see, they've got almost 200 kids per week who come, it's held on Mondays over the summer. There are, I'm thinking, I'm doing this off the top of my head, so there are at least 20 volunteers who are, are participating in that. What would you, what more would you like to know?
What's Grow's involvement? How do you impact that, your organization?
We're the fiscal sponsor for United Way Grant that they got. It's a $75,000 two-year grant that helps not only fund that program, but also an after-school program that they've launched this year.
Great, thank you.
So, I wanted to dig in a little bit about the tourism piece that you talked about at the outset. So, we had Angie Morris, no, we didn't have, we had Irene here, but anyway, we had Travel Salem here a week or so ago to talk about what they were doing. And one of the things that Irene talked about was, Bernard talked about, was the Gray Line bus tours that they just had done, done a contract with, right? And they were bringing them here, and they were talking about the Autumn Leaf Tours and things.
Silver Falls.
So, I was, yeah, so I was wondering if that, if you're connecting that up through them at all, because, you know, the thought is, we, like, Almsville Ponds is, you know, this gorgeous, pristine park area, and of course, you know, you can see the leaves turn as you drive out to Mill City, and, so have you been in touch with Travel Salem to talk with them about how the canyon might fit with some of the tours that Gray Line is looking at?
We haven't talked about the Gray Line Tours and the Leafs, but we have been talking with them about is the Big Eclipse in 2017. And I don't know if you've heard about that, there was the first big meeting, yeah. We've talked about that, because the, the path of that eclipse is going right through our area.
Right.
State and Sublimity Detroit will have the longest time. So, we've been talking about that. Part of, there are, so no, we've not talked to them about an organized group coming through our area. That's partly why we want to do a rural tourism studio, because our communities are working, like Detroit, already a destination, but they found out, realized this summer, they need to have other things for people to do when the lake level isn't quite what they want. Some of the communities are working individually on projects, like Mill City's another one, working on beautifying that stretch of Highway 22, and they've got a pretty robust kayaking business that works there also. But none of them are linked together, so when, when a visitor comes to the area, there is no way for them to figure out what's going on in other places, it's kind of hit and miss. And no one destination on its own is enough of a destination for people to stay or play for a long period of time. So, that's what the rural tourism studio is part of, and I would guess that we would be part of the Gray Line Tours, if that made sense. The focus is going to be on outdoor recreation first.
All right, well, contact Irene sooner rather than later and just find out what she has in mind, would you?
Yeah, well, ask her, I just, I just saw her last week, we were, and we were talking about the rural tourism studio, yes, that would be fun.
Yeah, because it just seems like it's an opportunity.
It's a beautiful drive, especially as you head up over to Central Oregon.
And then, I heard you mention that you had 150 counseling sessions.
Yeah.
And so, I'm trying to understand how your statistics work, because this is the first report I've seen where I've seen statistics.
Yes.
You know me, I like statistics. So, if you took the contact hours, are the contact hours above and beyond counseling?
Yes.
Or is that just counseling? Okay, so, tell me how you define contact hours.
This came from an evaluator that we've been working with, and it's an experiment for us to look at this. So, a contact hour, if I met with you for an hour, that's one contact hour. If I met with you and Kevin for an hour, that would be considered two contact hours. If somebody is in a, in a class for an hour, or two hours, and there are five people in it, that would be 10 contact hours.
Okay.
That's how, that's how it's.
But Kevin and I aren't your clients, so it's a client contact.
No, you're not our clients, but if you were our clients, no, if I'm, no, in fact, a huge chunk of our work over the last three months is not involved individual clients, it's been more laying the groundwork for some of these other projects that we're working on. So, and counseling sessions include people who meet one-on-one in person, also people who meet with me on the phone or things that we do online.
Okay.
Yeah, and some do all three.
All right, so I was just trying to figure out, so it could be clients that you meet with one-on-one in those 150 counseling sessions, and it also could be people who are in the workshops.
Everybody who gets one, individual attention from us, they get some kind of facilitation from me, is counted in the 150, not just people coming to Young Professionals Group. That's not counted in the counseling sessions.
So, I think maybe working with staff to kind of understand that, so the 2,130, we could see exactly how that breaks down.
Sure.
I mean, I just ran a quick, you know, 150, that would be like, an average of 14 hours per client, which didn't seem like that was.
No.
Right, yeah, so, and then, but I didn't include the workshop clients in that, so, just making sure that we're having realistic numbers and that they have, that they have meaning, so.
And we did notice that we track things a little bit differently than the way we're reporting them. So, that was, that was good information, so we need to change the, the way that we're collecting data, so it's easier to put these together for you.
Right.
Yeah.
But a very nice report, thank you for this.
Thanks.
This was helpful. Do you have other questions?
I just wanted to tell Allison that my boat was sold out already for August 21st, 2017, for The Darkness on the Lake.
Yeah, it's amazing, there are lodging facilities that are already full.
I know, I sold seats for $100 apiece, and they're gone, just teasing.
Oh, you could, though. I mean, one of the, wouldn't it be fun to be on a boat in the middle of Detroit Lake for that?
Oh, I'll be there.
It'd be awesome, yeah. You get to pick your spot now.
As long as my boat's floating, then.
So, there were five people from our area who were at that meeting on the eclipse last week, yeah.
I guess the other thing that I would just say, two weeks ago, I was at the Federal Lakes Meeting, I think that's something that, that the community, there was a lot of people there. And obviously, you know, the recreation and the tourism is dependent on probably a low priority up in the lake, is, I mean, recreation is a low priority when it comes to the Detroit Lake facility. And one of the things that was very clear is that, that recreation depends on late rainfall and snowpack. And this early rainfall is obviously helpful, but last year, the reason they didn't fill the lake was because they didn't have the late, late rainfall, and they didn't have the snowpack, it was kind of a double whammy. So, we're praying for rain this year and for some snowpack to help with the recreation at the canyon.
This, this is a good point, and I, and I'm not sure everybody knows this, that, and I didn't realize this either, only about 10% of the lake water is dependent on snowfall, 90% is on rainfall.
Right.
And that, I think we think of it, it's that we look at the mountains and see if there's snow up there, but a lot of it has to do with the rain, I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, the rain, the late rains fill it, the snowpack keeps it full during the summer, so, need them both.
We didn't have either.
Good.
Anything else this morning? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's fun to be here.
All right, we'll move now into SEDCor, Chad and Nick. Good morning.
For the record, my name's Chad Freeman, I'm President of SEDCor, and with me is Nick Harville, I think his title is the guy who does the work. With that, I'd like to touch base for our SEDCor's Quarterly Report. Rather than going through the report, I'll probably talk a little bit more about more of some of the trends that we see in some of the projects, and ask Nick to speak a little bit more specifically to, to some of the stuff locally. As you know, we went through a recent strategic planning sessions, and as a SEDCor organization, and really continued, one of the key words that continued to pop up was connections, and part of that was connecting companies not only to the resources they need to grow, grow here, stay here, expand here, or move here, but some of it became more about information that they needed to be successful here. Through that, we have been working on the Cascadia Threat Series, which we've had quite a big support for within the community. This has been a three-part series about how to help your business cope with a major earthquake, what that means, how to stay connected, how to keep your employees. And I loved the support and wanted to thank, take this opportunity to thank the county for their support, they're one of the sponsors, as well as the City of Salem and the Oregon Office of Emergency Management. But we've really looked at this as, how do we continue to survive as a community through the catastrophic earthquake event, and how do we keep our communities alive and thriving through that? We've had, this has been a three-part series, in fact, had an event last week with over 90 people showed up to really look at the details of what that looks like, and connect those with a great panel of speakers to help them understand what, help a business understand what an event like that looks like. The Red Cross did an outstanding job, we had folks from PGE, as well as I mentioned, city and county as well, to help educate folks. The other portion on that, so that's just some of the events we've been doing with, with business, but of our strategic pan, really our focus has been around the recruitment and retention of, of jobs here in the region. On the recruitment side, we're continuing to see increased interest. We've spoken before about one of the hurdles we have is the lack of building inventory, but the strength we have is our available land and the investment that our communities have taken to make sure that we've got a place for business to be successful, and that has been driving, as, driving the, some of the supply, which is why we're getting some more, some more looks from companies looking at moving in. The companies and the industries that are particularly focused on this region have been manufacturing firms, distribution firms, and food processing, and it's broken up, and about a third each of those have really been interested in terms of looking at our market. The other interesting trend for, for me is having been here now three years, and it's a little bit hard to believe, it's been three years already, is that, and I'd always, you heard that, is that, I always thought there'd be more demand coming out of the Portland metro area for, for companies looking at, at expanding, and the first couple of years, we hadn't seen that much interest. In the last quarter, we have seen significantly more interest and calls as companies are looking at making that jump, or at least evaluating that option. So, we're seeing that, and I think that's going to be a trend that will continue throughout the next year. And then, the, the third point I think that we've seen is statewide, but we've seen a microcosm here locally, is that of consolidation within the business industry as a whole. In the last, I think it's six months, we've had four significant projects statewide in terms of companies that have come in and been, been acquired. The largest of which, for example, was Precision Cast Parts in the metro area was acquired for, I believe it was, it was a very, very large deal, well over $20 billion. So, companies coming in and acquiring. And last week, it was public that Diamond Foods, who operates kettle foods here in Salem, had been acquired, and that was a significant deal, I think it's, it was announced, like I said, last Thursday. But we're seeing that and trying to figure out where that, how is that going to impact us locally? What is that going to mean, are there opportunities there? And we obviously think this is a great place to do business, so, just something I thought we, we keep our eye on as well. With that, I'd ask Nick to speak a little bit about some of the projects we're working on as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. One of the things I'd like to start out with is Allison mentioned the Trades Day up in Staton, and it was a great event. That's actually sponsored by the Willamette SD, Sherry Clark is kind of the driver behind that. She made a presentation yesterday at our SEDCor Construction Alliance meeting. Some of the guys from the Construction Alliance participated in the event out at Staton, but that included school districts, not just Staton, it included the Canyon Cascade and other school districts. There's another one planned for Jervis, which will include Mount Angel, Silverton, Woodburn, Jervis, North Marion. I talked to Matt Henry, the Superintendent, yesterday, and they're really excited about having that event out there. They are also looking at CTE training, as are seven and other school districts here in the county, from ag science to construction to fabrication, which is exciting, because that's where our future workforce is going to come from. Activities, one of the really great activities that has been going on is the, I guess, settling in and arranging for Yancey. Yancey Pallet owns Yancey Pallet, they do rebuilt pallets, which is a significant business. They also own Willamette Valley Lumber, which is located in Saio, was, it's now located in Staton, out at the old Mastercraft Building. There's a lot of activity in that property. If you go along Wilco Road, there's a lot of activity in all the formerly empty properties. LaTao now is moving in and moving all their machines over to the property on Wilco Road, and I think Norm plans on doing most of his repair work and winter work over there, which is great. The other thing I'd like to mention is Andy Gardner, the Superintendent at North Saniam School District, has made a concerted effort on his own, with a little help from myself and others, that he has gone out and met with people like Norm Johnson, who owns LaTao, about what he needs. What employees does he need, what skills does he need? And Andy has actually formed a business advisory group, which is going to meet quarterly and talk to the shop teachers, the English teachers, math teachers, about what skills the kids need. And I think that's great, and I think it's a model that some of the other districts are going to try and follow. We have several companies that are looking at expansions, available lands are there, some of them have to do a little more planning than others. One in particular expansion is about five years out, but it's going to take some significant planning with the community and the county to make that happen. In regards to Chad's comment on connections, there are significant projects going on throughout the county to lessen our dependence on the Port of Portland, not to replace it, but to supplement it. I want to be real clear on that. The Union Pacific wants to only pull 100-car trains, there's got to be somewhere to do that. To import and export goods from this part of the valley, it's expensive to drive all the way to Seattle, so there are alternatives that are being worked on. I got an email from Kevin Greenwood this morning, who is the Port Director for the Port of Newport, and they're trying to acquire some funds, they got $2 million in a grant last week to improve the barge facilities at the new international terminal. But not a lot of, not a lot of grass straw gets exported by barge, but other things do that are grown here in the valley. So, I think working with people like the Port of Toledo, the Port of Newport are critical to our future. But those are some of the, there's, there's a lot of projects going on in almost every community in this county.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Nick, I just want to compliment you on the, the focus on the youth and what's going on. Obviously, our workforce everywhere we go, we hear about workforce, workforce, and Commissioner Carlson and I were in a meeting just about our detention facilities, and where is that going, you know, with the juvenile detention issues? And I, I don't know if Commissioners got a chance to take a tour, but having the meeting, the SEDCor meeting, for, this is like the third time I've been over at the new CTE building. And as we did that tour, I was just so impressed with these young women and men coming up to me and sticking their hand out and saying, "Hi, my name is Nick Harville, and I'm studying this, and I'm proud to be here." I mean, you could just see the pride and the hope in these young people, who, and the stories about the young kid who rode his, you know, skateboard over there for six miles, you know, even when he didn't need to be there. Those are the kinds of programs that, it's so great to see the business community partnering with the school districts and the work that you're doing to get these young people connected up, to see a vision for what they could do in the future. And there's some kids that are going to come out of there, there's no doubt about it, that are going to go on to college and become engineers as a result of the little bit of hope they have, they saw in a construction program or a welding program. Just yesterday, I was up at McLaren, and, for a meeting on, on the re-entry business community, and even there, the programs that they have, and I don't know if you've seen what they're doing lately in connecting that up. They're actually making sure with Jamaica Community College that the equipment they have is a, is a seamless transition for these youth that come out of McLaren. of McLaren to go into a tech program at, at community colleges and actually earn some credits. So there's some really good things happening, and, and we know this workforce issue is a big deal, and we are losing, we, we know we've been losing youth to, for a lot of reasons we all complain about, whether it's the wage, or, you know, just no hope. And I can see our community, as I said to somebody last night, you can almost feel the tide starting to change as some of these programs are getting up off the ground, and 10 years from now, hopefully, we'll see the payback in, in some of the things that we face every day in making decisions on here. So thank you for your work there. And then the other question, oh, go ahead.
One of, I was going to mention, one of the companies that has, for years, supported the kids out at McLaren is Universal Forest Products from Woodburn. They've donated lumber, they've had them do parts, they've given them equipment and machines, so they've been very, very involved for a long time.
This equipment was high-tech, computer-driven, and they were cutting plywood with the, you know, the laser stuff.
CNC machines, yeah.
The, the other question that I have is the B R and E program, and how is that, where's the data being collected to? And I've heard a lot about this for the last year and a half, and, and there's a lot of people involved, and I think Allison's been part of the training and chambers, and where's that going to be housed, and how are we going to collect it, massage it, analyze it, and?
It's being collected and housed at our office. Sarah's actually offered, and Tamara have actually offered to give me some assistance in disseminating all the data and putting it all together. So we were going to work with one of the universities, but they needed to charge us $7,000 a community, which we don't have, and most of the communities don't have. So we're doing it the hard way.
Well, and, and the reason I asked, just, just last night, as I was catching up on my emails, A.J. Nash threw out a suggestion about doing a survey, I think I copied Sarah in on this email, survey of some of our small businesses and, and how our planning department could improve and those types of things, and it could go both ways. What, you know, surveying our planning department, and I don't think we've done this, going back to our planning department and code enforcement, and, and asking them what are the issues that they continually face out there, and then bringing those two together and seeing how we can improve efficiencies for businesses as well as our, our planning department, so we're not like this. So I think the, the, the business retention and expansion input that you're getting would be something that would help us with that survey and figuring out what, what it should really look like.
It's been, the biggest challenge has been to keep it moving forward. Almsville, right now, their citizens are out taking the certain, taking the surveys with businesses, and I'm just stopped, they put them in envelopes, I stop by and pick them up. They're at City Hall, Marianne keeps them at City Hall. Silverton is in the process. We just had a meeting last Tuesday night, training their people to go out and do the surveys, and they're going to use it as part of their visioning process. The head of Public Works for Marion County and I have had a conversation about what questions are in this survey, so they may garner information, just as you were referring to, out of the survey and the information we have. Some of the phone companies in the county are waiting to see what information comes out. When I met with Mayor Thacker up in Mill City, it was apparent that, you know, high-speed internet, when my iPhone was higher speed than what they had run into City Hall. Thorn, Thorn wants to move things ahead, and this will help.
I just think it's really important that we collect the data and get it to our Economic Advisory Board, so they can see some of the issues, and so, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So first of all, thank you for being here for your report. It's always informative and appreciate the successes that you're having. So just two quick things. One is the mention of working with the county on a particular piece of property that's five years out. I'm trying to remember what the context was for that comment.
Well, it's, it's an expansion that a company wants to do, and it is going to involve the city and the county.
All right, and is it?
Eventually.
Is it involving them with zoning and that type of thing?
Yes.
Okay. So just making sure, and I'm sure they know this, if it's a larger company, that our, that our planning department consults with people before you ever put your permit in, and so to get rolling on that.
Yep.
Because a lot of people just plow in and do what they think they need to do, and then they come back, and then they find out that they should have done other things.
Yeah.
So just a little word to the wise there. Okay, second, just second thing is, this is a little fun thing. We used to, at Job Growers, when it was Job Growers and not Insight, have an acronym box, and people, if they used an acronym, had to put a dollar in. I don't know if Chad, you were there when they did that? Mary Stern was the last person that kept the acronym box.
B R and E.
So I'm going to give Commissioner one, since he used it, Nick, you used it too.
No, 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 I said it out loud.
CTE, what does that stand for?
Oh, I thought you were talking about B R and E. I said business retention and expansion.
I know you did, I know, CTE.
Career Technical Education.
Thank you, and then E S D.
The Educational Service District.
Education.
Willamette.
Education.
Education.
No, no way, on the Education Service District, right?
Service District.
All right.
I'm in class every day.
Right, exactly. So, all right, you both get a gold star. I won't make you pay a dollar for those two acronyms. So, anything else?
I better not say anything.
As long as you don't use acronyms.
Just, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the work you're doing and, and being on the, the board and keeping us informed, and it's good. I mean, there's, there's a lot happening out there.
Thank you for your guys' work.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now move to our consent calendar, and I don't have to ask whose turn it is, because we're missing our other Commissioner today. Something about fish, I think, is spelling it.
Yeah, and being successful at it, from what I understand.
Right, yeah, this is a big dip.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move our consent calendar. The first item on the agenda is under the Health Department to approve an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network to refund unexpended funds in the amount of $1,241,971 for regional acute psychiatric inpatient services retroactive to August 1st, 2015 through December of, 31st of 2016. Second item is under Health as well, approve, approve to set public hearing for November 25th, 2015, to consider, consider the ambulance service area, ASA. Administrator's recommendation regarding renewal of a contract for ASA number seven with the Idana Detroit Rural Fire Protection District, R F D P. Third item on the agenda is to approve, under Public Works, to approve scheduling a joint public hearing with the Woodburn City Council for December 14th, 2015, to consider the, to consider the remand and readoption of the Woodburn Urban Growth Boundary.
All right, so you've moved those items, and I'll second the motion, and I did want to make a quick comment on the first one, because it's a very large amount of money.
Yes.
$1.2 million, and on consent, we usually don't have those large numbers. This is, the Regional Acute Care Network is a group of counties, and I think there's five counties, six counties in there, that includes Marion County. They joined together a number of years ago to be able to place people with psychiatric needs in the various hospitals. And so Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network is simply the vessel for holding the money. They don't really do anything other than pass through the money to the various counties. So the group met recently of Health Department Directors, primarily from these counties, to talk about some unspent funds and how they might redeploy them. So a portion of the funds is being held in reserve to make sure that there's enough to cover those acute cases in the hospitals, and the others are going back for more preventive services at the various county levels. So that is the purpose of that very large dollar amount. So any further discussion on any of the items? All right, those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's approved. So we just have one item under action today, no public hearings. Under Contract Review Board, consider approval of a discretionary action that would waive minor informalities in a proposal received in response to the request for proposals issued for incinerator ash residue solution. And Camber, you are here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camber Schlag. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager for the Finance Department here at Marion County, and I am here before you today to seek approval of a discretionary action. Public Works issued a request for proposals on August 31st, 2015. The RFP closing deadline was October 22nd, 2015. Three proposals were received in response to the RFP. On October 21st, 2015, one of the proposers emailed myself notifying me that they had left out the thumb drive with the electronic copy of the proposal in it, and had attached a PDF copy of the proposal to the email. It was confirmed that this proposal technically received a minor, contained a minor informality because the electronic copy of the proposal was not included, which, it doesn't affect the proposal, but it is a requirement under 3.2.1 of the RFP. So upon approval or denial of this discretionary action, I will notify the proposer of the outcome of the electronic submission. If the county waives this minor informality, the proposal will be moved into the evaluation phase. If the county does not waive this minor informality, this proposer will be declared non-responsive and will be removed from the evaluation process. The county shall not allow an offer to correct or withdraw an offer for an error in judgment. Prior to the award of the contract, if the county discovers certain mistakes in an offer after opening, the county may take action on the mistakes pursuant to Marion County Public Contracting Rule, Section 20-0470, the county may waive or permit an offer to correct a minor informality. A minor informality is a matter of form rather than substance that is evident on the face of the offer, or an insignificant mistake that can be waived or corrected without prejudice to the other offers.
Thank you, Camber. So let me just reiterate what I thought I heard you say, and what's here, too. So in addition to the paper copies, the proposers were required to submit an electronic copy. The RFP said that they had to submit it on a USB drive. This proposer submitted it prior to the deadline, right? Because October 22 was the deadline, and they submitted by email on October 21.
Right.
So it's just the email submission. Did they also submit it on a thumb drive later, or was it just the email one? Or did you care?
No, well, I, I, yeah, they, they, they did email me. I did not respond to the email. I'm waiting to respond to the email. They said we, we, we just remembered that we forgot to include the thumb drive. I've attached it here via PDF. Is this okay? And then when we opened the proposal, sure enough, it was not included, and that's when we decided to come forward. We can request a thumb drive if we need to, but the email is, will be sufficient if it's allowed.
I mean, it's the same electronic copy, whether you get it by email or whether it's on a thumb drive?
Right.
Okay. Just double checking.
Do we need to open a Contract Review Board session?
We're operating under the Contract Review Board, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I'll consider that, that we approve a discretionary action that would waive minor informalities in the proposal received in response to the request for proposal issued for incinerator ash residue.
Solution. All right, I will second the motion. So the motion is to approve the discretionary action to grant a waiver of a minor informality in response to this RFP. Any further discussion? Anything else, Camber?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Thank you.
It's approved, so now you can email back.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so that concludes our action today. Again, no public hearings. I'll go ahead and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings between November 4th and November 11th, where two or three Commissioners will be present. We're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. At noon today, Wednesday, November 4th, we'll be up in Woodburn at 523 Front Street, Luisa's Taqueria, for our monthly meeting with Woodburn officials. Friday, November 6th, at 7:30 in the morning, we're out at the Kaiser Civic Center in Iris Room A, 930 Shamawa Road Northeast in Kaiser for, it's actually a meeting of the Mid Valley Workforce Board, and I'm not sure there's other groups that are meeting jointly with that meeting. It's a strategic planning session. At 1 o'clock, Friday, November 6th, is a Pay for Success Steering Committee meeting in the Commissioners Boardroom here at Courthouse Square. On Monday, November 9th, at 8:30 in the morning, is Board of Commissioners Calendar Review. That would be followed by Management Update. Both of those meetings are in the Silverton Conference Room at Courthouse Square. Tuesday, November 10th, at 7:30, is our monthly Stateon Marion County Breakfast Meeting at the Cover Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Stateon. That is followed at 9 o'clock with a meeting convened, I think by the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, called Justice Reinvestment Convening of Counties. That will be held at the DPSST, Department of Public Safety Standards and Training.
Good, I was going to charge you a dollar for that.
And there is no address on here, but it is out on Almsville Highway, beyond the jail, on the left side of the road, if anybody wants to go there. And you do have to bring ID, I think, because, anyway, there's security there. November 10th, Tuesday, 2:30, is a CCTV taping. This is for our Marion County Today Program that airs on Capital Community Television, and that's at 575 Trade Street Southeast in Salem. And then on Tuesday, November 10th, at 4, will be the monthly meeting of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, held in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. And I'm wondering if I have?
What's CCTV?
I said it was Capital Community Television. You weren't, you weren't listening. I did say that. Did I not say that? I did say it. I've got witnesses.
Oh, my ears.
All right. Okay, so now I'm looking for, I think that I'm missing the backside of this.
USB.
Oh, now that is interesting. What is that? What does that stand for, USB? I can look it up really quick. Thank you.
That's a $5 fine.
That is, right.
Because we didn't even know what the acronym was.
All right, board session. Where is the calendar? Is it? Oh, so Wednesday is a holiday. Yeah, we usually put that on the calendar, because the county offices will be closed. Okay, so there will be no board session next week. Nope, it's not on here either. Wednesday, November 11th, because we're closed for Veterans Day. Okay, so that's the calendar. Anything else for the good of the order?
So, yeah, yes, Madam Chair, I, I just want to welcome Kristi to her first day solo as our secretary, right? Is that?
Board Clerk.
Board Clerk, and your daughter, is it Emily? Emily is shadowing her today.
Ah.
And sophomore at what school?
State.
State and High, right. So welcome, and it's great to have you flying solo. I know how that feels.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
It's been a busy week already.
It has been, yes.
Long day yesterday, and a long day today, yeah.
Right. Well, so today we're having a meeting in this, this afternoon to plan some community forums that we're going to be doing after the first of the year with the Public Safety Coordinating Council, kind of taking this justice reinvestment plan and other public safety issues out on the road. So we'll want to make sure that you and Commissioner Brantano are involved in that, so the three of us can be out there wherever possible as we move forward, so we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Come up with a plan.
Yeah, so.
And I left my count, my paper calendar at home, so I'm lost them, and I have to throw them and get it.
Well, we, we've just got a lot going on, you know. So, yeah, I, it's, I mean, we shared on Monday from last week, we had a lot that was going on, but I think the issue, the Public Safety Coordinating Council, 3194, issues are going to be big, and then our environmental, how do I want to say that, waste management issues are going to be, be coming up, so we're spending a lot of time making sure we do the right things in, in capital construction projects, so we're busy.
So when is that tour, that Saturday tour that we're doing?
It's November, I believe, the 14th, is that?
So just beyond this calendar, probably?
Yeah, it's November 14. We're going to be touring the Covanta Plant in the Asheville, and it'd be great to see, hopefully, when, when these proposals come out, we'll find some solutions to that.
Oh, that would be so wonderful.
It'd be, touchdown.
Manna from heaven, right?
Yeah.
So the other thing that I just thought of is that, yes- So the other thing that I just thought of is that yesterday, we had a training that went from 10 to 2 over at Broadway Commons. Back in, well, the story goes, back in 2010, I think it was, Fay Fagel invited me to go to lunch with her and she essentially said, "I'd like to do something with Juvenile the way you've been doing something with adult reentry. Kind of like to get you involved and what could we do to enhance resources and do things like that?" So the problem statement that she came up with, that she was trying to solve, was that they have these parents that call the Juvenile Department. In fact, yesterday when I met with her, she said they had another call this week where parent calls, "My child's out of control. Would you put him in detention for a couple days or allow him to tour detention, kind of scared straight so he can see what he shouldn't be doing?" And of course, you know, that's not what we do. We don't just put kids in detention to help parents supervise them. But they get this all the time and so how do we deal with this? So of course, being government, we put together a work group that met for a year and Ryan Albritton and I co-chaired, he reminded me that we co-chaired it. I remembered him chairing it, so, and he gave us his lovely conference room over at US Bank to hold the meetings in and we had all the likely suspects. We had Tim Sinatra from the Boys and Girls Club. We had a School Resource Officer. We had 24J Louise Brantley, who was, I think, on the board at the time and, or Chris was on, I'm trying to remember, she was on the Commission on Children and Families and Chris Brantley was on the board and another staff person from 24J. So we had a bunch of nonprofit people, school people, public safety people, meeting to talk about how we address this problem. So the first thing we looked at was 211. That was just coming out and whether, you know, parents, if they called 211, could get a list of resources, which we thought, you know, is maybe part of a solution, but certainly not the whole solution. When you call 211, it's kind of like when you call nine or 411, you're looking for a phone number. You're not necessarily getting counseling on how you deal with a child or what resources work or that kind of thing. So then we brought up Jeff Sprague, who I worked with when I was getting my doctoral degree down at University of Oregon. And he does this Positive Behavioral Supports Program in schools and screening and that kind of thing, which looked like a really interesting program. And in fact, Kelly Carlisle was at our training yesterday and said Salem Kaiser School District is starting to look at that for their elementary schools. I know a number of rural schools, especially in Douglas County where I've done some work, have implemented that model. So creates a real school culture where there's positive reinforcement and they set their own rules and, you know, and it really improves behavior in the school. So that's a piece of it, but Salem Kaiser was like kind of a big thing to chew, you know? And so then we pulled in, I contacted a guy named Tom DeShawn, who I had worked with. I took a class from him when I was down in Eugene 20 years ago doing this master, doctoral degree. And he referred me to a woman named Beth Stormshack. He's actually at Arizona, University of Arizona now. And she came up and did a PowerPoint presentation on a program called Echo Fit, which they've now renamed Family Checkup. And it's, it's an evidence-based program that says that it's really, and Kevin Moore, who is now the person that Beth referred me to that came up and did the training, said that these, that youth, like in all of these years when they were doing psychotherapy with youth, they tried to get inside the youth's head and say, "What are you feeling, thinking, doing?" And changed the way they're thinking about things from the inside. But then they'd get put into their context, which is their family. And what they determined was that a lot of these behavioral issues are not so much created internally, but there are reactions to things that are happening around us, whether it's our family environment, our school environment, our peer environment, whatever. And so if they can change these different elements, they can actually affect the behaviors of the child. And so much of it involves parenting skills, parenting supervision, the conflict in the family and resolving that, having the communication skills to do that. But then he also, when he was laying it out yesterday, said that most of the parenting classes we have are either 12 or 14 weeks. And they're that way because they came out of universities which have either 12 or 14 week semesters or terms. And that most families can't make it to classes for 12 or 14 weeks. So the average number for a good family to get there is five. So they're not getting, it's, they drop out. It's just too much for them. So what this program does is it acknowledges that that's just overkill and that maybe what we do is we do an assessment with the family. We figure out what their strengths are, what they would like to, what they need attention, that's what they said, what they needed to pay some attention to. And you pick one of those areas where you need attention and then they work on that and it's, and they don't, they.
One thing at a time.
Yeah, and they get coaching and.
I can already do one thing.
Right, and so they showed the, the, well, he talked about the outcomes. He didn't have the slide, but for elementary students in seventh grade, their attendance went up significantly. For the middle school students, their use of substance went, wasn't zeroed out, but the velocity, it said, went way down. And he had, attendance went up, grades went up. So they've had really good outcomes from this. So our concept that we had back in 2011 was what, and, and it's not a program where you add people. It's a program where you train the people that are already working in your organization to know how to do this. So it's a training program and then you, you'd have someone at the Catholic Boys and Girls Club, someone at Catholic Community Services, someone in the Sheriff's Office, someone at Juvenile, which Juvenile's already taken the training, by the way, for part of their programs, to be able, so no, so no matter where the parent calls, instead of saying, "Well, we can't do this, why don't you go to the Juvenile Department," or "We can't do this, why don't you go to Catholic Community Services," you, or "Our funds don't pay for this because you're not Medicaid eligible." If the Boys and Girls Club could do it, anybody, you know, could, could get involved there. So we had about 50 people that showed up yesterday for this training and it was really well-received. And so I think we're going to try to figure out how we're going to pay for an initial training for people to get involved. I'm going to be sending out an email today about how many Medicaid clients do there or somebody, because we're actually going to write our first grant through the Coordinated Care Organization. We had Scott Tiffany there and he said he thought this is something the CCO might be willing to pay for. And then, but the, the other trick is the sustainability part of it. So the way that they want to set it up is that there are people in management in all of those organizations that are certified trainers. So when they have turnover, this is the problem that they've had, they, then they don't lose the entire program because their trained staff leave and then someone else has to pick up the training, either in Eugene or if we bring it here, there's a cost to that.
What was the training yesterday? Broadway Commons?
Yeah, it was at Broadway Commons, right. So there were, it was really well-attended and I think people got a lot out of it.
Hey, that was, that, interesting Broadway Commons, that was a comment that Casey made. He said, "Every, every city, every church could have one of these buildings. It's a great place for people come together and do good things in the community."
Well, he said if churches in the United States did this, it would change the world, is what he said.
Right, that's what he said, yeah.
Yeah. And Kevin Moore, who was our trainer yesterday, was like, "Wow, great building. A church built this?" He was, he was really impressed. Yeah, so we were up on the third floor yesterday, kind of tightly in a, 50 of us in a room.
We need something like that replicated out south.
Uh-huh.
So, let's see.
So anyway, that's, that was yesterday.
Good.
All right, anything else? You want me to bang the gavel here?
Yeah, we can be done.
We'll adjourn.